Okay, so you're ready.
We pointed our six o'clock having been reached, I call the meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. Pursuant to Governor's Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in any one place. This public hearing of the Town of Amherst zoning board of appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking on a link on the town webpage. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the members of the ZBA and panels for tonight's meeting. I'm the Chair Steve Judge, I'm here. Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Mr. Wal- Ms. Waldman?
Yeah.
Mr. Greenie?
Here.
Also in attendance is Maureen Pollock, Planner with the Town Planning Department. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is Section 10.38. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board at the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its question, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the application tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merit, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of its hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is filed until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision in the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded as a registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. ZBA FY 2021-18. Henry E. Whitlock requests a special permit in order to allow the pre-existing non-conforming one-family detached dwelling to be structurally altered and expanded into the required side yard setback by 18 feet, adding approximately 180 square feet to the proposed connecting storage space in two habitable space under Section 9.22 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw. Located at 1120 Southeast Street, MAP 23B, Parcel 8, Outlying Residents RO and Low Density Residents RLD Aquafor Recharge Protection ARP zoning districts. ZBA FY 2021-19. Joel Greenbaum requests a special permit in order to allow the change of use from a pre-existing non-conforming use veterinary establishment to a residential use, one-family detached dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as proposed by complementary principal use to the existing one-family detached dwelling under Section 3.01, 9.22, and 10.38 under zoning bylaws. Located at 300 North Pleasant Street, MAP 11C, Parcel 170, General Residents RG zoning district. And ZBA FY 2021-20. John Kuhn requests a special permit in order to allow the construction of a 36-by-64-foot maintenance garage and installation of two signs under Section 3.337, 8.5, 10.38 of the zoning bylaw located at Wildwood Cemetery, 70 Strong Street, MAP 11B, Parcel 70, Neighborhood Residents RN zoning district. Following those items, there's a general public comment period about which people can comment on anything not before the board tonight and other business anticipated within the last 48, not anticipated within the last 48 hours. The first order of business tonight is a public hearing on FY 2021-18. Henry E. Whitlock requests a special permit in order to allow the pre-existing non-conforming one-family detached dwelling to be structurally altered and expanded into the required side yard setback by 18 feet, adding approximately 180 square feet to the proposed connecting storage space in two habitable space under Section 9.22 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw located at 1120 Southeast Street, MAP 23B, Parcel 8, Outlying District RO and Low Density Residents RLD/Aquafor Exchange Protection ARP zoning districts. Members sitting on this panel are myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Mr. Meadows, and Ms. Waldman. Are there any disclosures? I also want to note that the Building Commissioner, Mr. Mara, has also joined us for the meeting tonight. Rob, thank you. If there are no disclosures, there was a site visit on Monday, June 7th. At the site visit, we observed the outside property, walked around the house, saw where the additional space would be, the additional structure is going to be constructed. Saw the existing underground structure. We walked down where the existing earth sheltered structure, it is open to the fields and back of the property. We walked, we observed the back of the property and the siding that the applicant was putting up. We walked into the structure to observe the inside. We saw the existing connector to the garage or the underground space. And I think that's pretty much detailed them, the, we also looked at the some retaining wall that was there at the property. Is there anything that anybody else would want to add to the list of items addressed at the site visit? All right, if not, does any, the following submissions have been received by the town staff on this application. The ZBA application, site plan prepared by Randall Iser, dated April 26th, building plans, all prepared by Laura's Architectural Drafting and dated March 1st, which include elevations, first floor plan and a foundation plan. Planning staff submissions include a zoning map, an aerial map, top topography map, and a project application report dated June 4th, 2021. And the applicant's waiver request from plan requirements include a waiver from the management plan, landscape plan, lighting plan, and assigned plan. Mr. Whitlock, are you here to represent yourself on this matter? I think he's muted.
Henry, if you could unmute yourself and, if possible, turn your camera on.
I'm trying. Sorry.
All right, take your time.
Can you hear me?
You can. I'll go ahead and pull up his.
Sorry. This is my first zone.
Well, I'll have to say that you've been lucky to be able to avoid it for the last 16 months.
I'd still be riding a horse to work if I could.
Eva, I can share my screen and if he, if Henry wants to open his proposal.
All right. Mr. Whitlock, why don't you proceed? How long do you think you'll speak for?
Just a couple minutes.
Okay.
So what I'm existing, I'm proposing to do is where the existing dwelling is now, you can see. And I'm trying to attach a mudroom so I can go from that existing dwelling. And there was a tunnel built from the garage, from this existing dwelling into the garage underneath. And I'd like to put a mudroom above the ground so I can go from the house right into the basement of the garage and turn that into living space, the purple area. So the, so the one wall on the north side will stay, then I'll take out the wall on the right and add, make it a 10-foot breezeway mudroom and put stairs down into the basement area, underground garage area.
And you, Maureen, go ahead, Mr. Whitlock.
I'm sorry, and everything will match the existing house, the way the house is, sort of all look like it's been there forever, you know? Be shingle siding on the house, as you saw the other day. Stone veneer on the basement garage area. So I'm trying, and you know, the neighbors really won't see it because it's all hedged in already. Now, there you go, yeah, now you can see it. So I guess that's, that's what I'm proposing.
All right. Let me just go through. The one question I had, Mr. Whitlock, was about trash removal and sewage. I remember there were some, some pipes, it was downstairs that we observed. And you talked about the tracking of those pipes. I thought that was for, I didn't know if it was for sewage or if it was for water. Can you tell us what you're doing in terms of sewage? Are you hooked up to the town sewage or you?
Town sewer, yes. So what I, yeah, when I bought the property, I had a guy come out with a camera because the sewers comes out of the back of the house, which I thought was a little odd. So at some point, somebody, he probably Mr. Collins, had ran a sewer line out the back of the house and down the existing driveway. So we cambered it out because he had a sink and stuff in the garage area which he hooked into that sewer. So when, if you go in the little tunnel now, there's a clean out there. So I popped out the clean out to see where that went. And we ran a camera all the way down there, so the camera followed where the pavers kind of go and then down the driveway to the town sewer. And it's also town water which comes out of the front of the dwelling.
Okay. And will you be, I also didn't notice any place for trash removal or storage of trash receptacles and recycling. Is that something you have planned for? You're gonna take care of it?
In the kitchen, I have a trash pullout with two bins, one for recycling, one for trash. And then down in that little shed area, we'll put barrels so we can do them down there, you know, and then we'll have trash pickup.
You got a trash pickup?
Yeah.
So the barrels will be contained in the downs, will be not exposed out to the neighbors.
Correct.
In a garage or something, okay?
I have the one down by, that little garage down by the road that you probably saw when you came in.
The last question I have, and then I'll open it to other board members, is your, if you can bring that, the next page up, Maureen, I think it's page three. No, go back, maybe it's page five then. Then six. The one that shows the, there we go. That's it. Go back one. There we go. So the angled portion is the, the one that's coming off at a slight angle from the house is the new structure. It extends partially into the setback, but you are farther away from the setback than the rest of the back of the house. That's correct, right?
You're, I'm not going any closer than anything there now.
Yep. And you're into the 20-foot setback. It is a 20-foot setback, is it not?
I think it's 25.
25?
I think so.
You're into it for just eight feet and part, first eight feet of that new foyer, okay? All right, I have no other questions. Does any member of the board have questions for Mr. Whitlock? If not, is there any public comment? Any member of the public who wishes to address this? I don't see any public comments. All right. That being the case, last chance for comments from, or questions from board members. What I would like to do then, I would, I think we have consensus to move out of the public hearing and into a public, public meeting. And what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to open the public meeting on this matter while keeping the public hearing still open. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Meadows moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Max, Mr. Maxfield, is there any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. The Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Waldman?
Aye.
The public meeting is a time when the board, for the board to discuss and vote on conditions, findings, and the approval or rejection of the application, the special permit. So what I'd like to do is review the possible conditions that were contained in the project application report and then go through our findings that were required to make in Section 9.22 and 10.38. So the potential possible conditions included listed in, the ones listed in the project application report. The standard project shall be built according to approved plans and maintained as needed. Any substantial changes from the approved plan shall come back before the zoning board of appeals at a public meeting for review and approval. The approved plans include the site plan and building plans, including elevations, first floor, and the foundation plans dated March 1st, 5th, and 5th respectively. Second condition is that all exterior lights shall be designated, are designed and installed so as to be shielded or downcast and to avoid light trespass onto adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures shall be selected according to Dark Sky compliance recommendations of the ZBA rules and regulations. Are there any other conditions board members would like to consider? Any discussion on those conditions? All right, if not, I'd like to move to make our findings. We need to make a finding under 9.22 and 10 point, and of course, a 10.38 findings. Under 9.22, we are, the, we have the authority in a 9.22 for, "We may authorize under a special permit a non-conforming use of a building, structure, or land to be extended or a non-conforming building to be structurally altered and enlarged or reconstructed, provided that the authority finds that such alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming building." In this case, we're talking about a side setback which is encroaked by approximately 18 feet, adding about 180 square feet to the proposed house. And that the, I don't think we need the, and the lot requirement, Maureen, we're good with that because he's in the RLD district, correct?
Correct. The lot area, since the frontage of, the frontage is within the outlying residential districts, the lot area requirement is 30,000 square feet and the property has, yeah, so they meet that requirement.
They meet that requirement. All right, so, so we, I propose we make the finding that the board needs to make a finding under Section 9.22 for the proposed structural extension and alteration into the required side yard by 18 feet and the proposed house addition mudroom on a lot that may or may not, that, a lot that meets the lot area requirements. I would also, we have to also consider 10.38 specific findings, 10.380 and 10.381. By the way, if people have questions about these findings while I'm going through them, please raise your hand and, and let me know. 10.38 and 10.381 deals with suitability in the neighborhood as deemed appropriate by us. We find that the proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood and is compatible with the existing single-family home located on the subject property and the surrounding residential neighborhood. The applicant is proposing 180-square-foot building addition to their existing single-family home. 10.382, 383, 385, and 387. The proposal would not constitute a nuisance due to air-water pollution, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters, vehicles, or pedestrians. The proposal reasonably protects the adjoining premises against detrimental offensive uses on-site, including air and water pollution, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or features. The proposal provides convenient, safe vehicular pedestrian movement. Staff review, I think the finding, the applicant requested a waiver from submitting a lighting plan to the board. It is, while it's unclear about the lighting, he is proposing condition number two requires that the lighting comply with the Dark Sky compliance recommendation of the ZBA regulations. We also find that the, it doesn't, that the building itself did not constitute nuisance on air-water pollution, flood, noise, odor, dust, et cetera. 10.384, adequate and appropriate facilities provided for proper operation of use. The utility services are found to be adequate for the operation existing at the proposed use. 10.386, the proposal ensures that it is in performance with parking sign regulations. The applicant provides at least two parking spaces. There is no existing proposed signage. 10.387, proposal provides a convenient and safe vehicular traffic, particular movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets. Submitted plan shows, we find that submitted plan shows that safe vehicular and pedestrian movement is found on the site. 10.388, the proposal ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and loading of vehicles. This is not applicable. 10.389, proposal provides adequate mental disposal or storage for sewage, waste, refuges, and recyclables, other ways resulting from the use permitted. Pursuant to the conversation tonight, we find that the applicant has requested a waiver submitting a management plan, but he has, he's connected to the town water and is connected to the town sewer. That will, we probably should verify that, Maureen, but I think via his assertion that should be connected to the town sewer. 10.390, proposal ensures protection from flood hazards as stated in Section 3.228. The property is not within a flood zone. 10.39 deals with unique or important natural or historic scenic features. That's not applicable to this project. 10.392 provides adequate landscaping, including the screening of adjacent residences, uses, street trees, landscape islands, et cetera. The applicant requested a waiver from the management plan, but we find that the property provides adequate landscape, including vegetative screening onto the abiding, abutting properties north and south of the subject property. 10.393, proposal provides protection and adjacent properties by minimizing the intrusion of lighting, including parking lot, exterior lighting, et cetera. Condition two, dealing with lighting is applicable to this. While it's requested, while the applicant has requested a waiver from the management plan, we, the lighting, intrusion of lighting would be dealt with through the app, through the adherence to the ZBA recommendations on Dark Sky compliant lighting. 10.394, the proposal avoids impact on slopes. This is not applicable. 10.395, the proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain, the use, the scale, the architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity that have functions or have visual relationships there too. We find the submitted building plans show that a proposed 100-square-foot, 80-square-foot building addition to be harmonious with the struck, the terrain, and to the use scale and architecture of the existing building in the vicinity and have functional or visual relationship thereof. 10.396, proposal provides for screening, storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, roofing. It seems that the, the applicant has asserted that they have a place to put trash and recycling receptacles that are out of sight in enclosed garage. 10.397, the proposal provides adequate recreational facilities. We find that that's the case. There's enough open space located on the site. 10.398, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. The proposed building addition to the single-family home at the subject property is in harmony, harmony with the master plan. The board has determined that we have, the board by this will determine that it meets Section 9.22 and 10.38 under the zoning bylaw. So we have made, if there are no objections, we have made findings consistent with 9.22 and 10.3. Are there any, is there any further discussions, any further conditions or questions about findings? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve the application with conditions, the special permit application with conditions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Parks, move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Maxfield, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Waldman?
Aye.
motion unanimous, the motion carries. Mr. Whitlock, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next order of business is ZBA FY 2021-19. Joel Greenbaum requests a special permit in order to allow a change of use from a pre-existing non-conforming use of veterinary establishment to residential use, one-family detached dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as proposed as a, as proposed as a complementary principal use to the existing one-family detached dwelling under Sections 3.01, 9.22, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw. Located at 300 North Pleasant Street, MAP 11C, Parcel 170, General Residents RG zoning district. Members sitting on this panel are myself, Ms. Parks, Ms. Waldman, Mr. Meadows, and Mr. Greenie. Are there any disclosures? Sites visit were discussed, were conducted on Monday, June 7th. At that time, we met the applicant and the architects out in front of the house, the existing house. We observed the driveway to the left of the existing house as we walked down. We looked at the existing veterinary built, empty veterinary building. We observed its proximity to the lot line. A retaining wall that was there. We looked at the area between the lot line and observed where there's a proposed patio which is described to be gently landscaped. We observed what the place, the placement where the new building would be, where the reconstructed building would be located before family, the four, four unit or single-family dwelling containing four bedrooms. We observed the existing garage that is proposed to be retained and parking, the two parking areas, both have four, four parking spaces. We also observed the lot line in the back. We tried to observe the We also observed the lot line in the back. Um, we tried to observe the lot line in the back, but we saw where, we didn't go to it. We saw where, where it ran. Um, as well as the property, uh, this property how it ran to the to the south, um, and also observed where the fencing in the arborvities would be to shield neighbors from parking lights. Were there other questions or other comments that people made at the site because they want to enter into the record? Ms. Parks?
I think we also were looking at the, um, the grading or the slope of the driveway which will be altered.
Yep, good point. Yes, we did. Alright. Um, material that's been received by the town. Um, an applicant, ZBA application, a management plan. Uh, a project summary prepared by Zen, Zen engineer dated March third, twenty, May third, twenty twenty one. A plan set prepared by Zen engineer, Bucky Sparkle dated May third, twenty twenty one, which includes uh, three sheets, a title sheet, an existing, uh, sheet containing existing conditions and removals. A site plan and sheet three of, uh, details. We also received a building plan prepared by Coon Riddle Architects dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty, which includes four five, um, sheets, a cover sheet, floor plans. Um, exterior elevations dated March seventeenth, uh, and building sections. We s- we received a lease agreement as well as amendments to the lease agreements via email, uh, dealing with the total number of persons on site and overnight visitors. Uh, complaint response form, a parking sticker form, uh, for Greenbaum Rentals. Special permit findings, uh, draft, May fifth, an email from Wetlands Administrator Aaron Jacks. Staff submissions include a zoning map, a property map, an aerial map, topography map, and project application report dated June fourth, twenty twenty one. And the applicant has requested a waiver from the sign plan. Maureen, is that, Maureen, is that pretty much it yet for the submissions?
Yes.
Alright, um, Mr. Green, Greenbaum, um, who, are you going to represent yourself or do you have a a representative?
I believe Chris Farley is gonna make the presentation, please.
Mr. Farley, give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, so my name is Chris Farley. I'm an architect with Coon Riddle Architects at, um, uh, on, at twenty eight Amity, uh, in Amherst. And Maureen, are, are, can I share my screen or, or do you want to share yours?
Oh, uh, please go ahead and, and share your screen.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Alright, can, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, um, uh, this is the location of the property, uh, North Pleasant, right across from Kendrick Park. Uh, it's quite, the lot is quite deep and it, it's a kind of a hammerhead shape in the back, uh, accesses off North Pleasant. I, I'm gonna give a very quick overview of, of the project and I, and then I would be happy to take any specific uh, questions. So there, uh, this is an existing, uh, site survey here. You can see the, 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 the property lines around here around the edge. Uh, this is North Pleasant Street. This is the existing front, uh, brick house. Uh, there are no modifications or changes proposed to that. Uh, that dwelling will remain exactly as is. There is a driveway that, uh, enters, uh, along the south side of the, of the property, goes by the existing vet building which is here. Uh, and then goes to, uh, parking and back. Some of it is paved, some is gravel. And this is the one-car garage on the property. Um, and the proposal that we have is essentially to, uh, to demolish and reconstruct a building that is substantially similar to the existing vet building which is located here and to make some other, uh, site improvements. So that's what this plan, uh, is here. Um, the driveway will stay, uh, substantially where it is. Uh, the building that we are proposing, uh, the outline is shown here. Uh, it is fundamentally on the same footprint as the existing building. It's a little deeper, uh, going toward the, uh, the west and back, and it has this small addition uh, proposed on the back of it, but it is substantially located in the same location. Uh, the front of it is in the same location relative to the existing, uh, brick house. Uh, we are proposing some, uh, uh, minor landscape, uh, planting beds here, a walkway that would go to the existing dwelling, uh, here to the right and that would, uh, uh, go to the new, the entry door and the new dwelling to the left. Um, a small stone, uh, terrace area, uh, with, uh, trash bins and recycling bins. Uh, there will be a new six-foot-high wooden stockade fence uh, to shield, uh, those, um, uh, trash receptacles and rec- recycling receptacles from the property to the north. Um, the, the, the slight regrading we talked about, um, is the, that, uh, in order to uh, eliminate kind of a high point, a hump in the existing driveway and to make the proposed parking behind the building, uh, a little flatter. Um, the, the, the grade, uh, here along this part of the driveway will be reduced by uh, an elevation by about ten to twelve inches. Uh, and because we are so close to the adjacent property line, we need to install a, a small retaining wall, a pre-engineered retaining wall here. It's about two and a half feet high at the highest point. And then, uh, so i- in, in the back part of the property, we are proposing four parking spaces here. Uh, which would be for one of the dwelling units and then four parking spaces, uh, here that i- i- is in substantially the same location as some of the existing parking spaces. Um, the, uh, the area, uh, sur- uh, where the new parking is and where the, the, the grading uh, uh, changes would be repaved. Um, there are some small arborvitie, an arborvitie hedge being proposed here to screen uh, the, the, the new parking from the adjacent property. And there are some large arbor, arborvities here, uh, to screen the, the these four spaces, which is where the existing parking is from the properties to the south. Um, I will point out one, uh, thing here and, and this is the wetland flagged area. Uh, and we have a couple of um, uh, buffer, uh, buffer areas indicated here. This is the one hundred foot or, uh, I'm sorry, no, this is the fifty-foot wetland buffer. This is the one hundred-foot wetland buffer. Uh, so we do need to go before the concom. Uh, our civil engineer, Bucky Sparkle, has been in contact with them and has initiated that process, uh, for review. And, and let's see here. I guess I would just say that, uh, from a dimensional point of view, um, we have a, a non-conforming, uh, uh, front, uh, frontage here. It's forty-eight uh, feet and change. Uh, the existing zoning, uh, requires, uh, one hundred feet. Uh, there's a side setback issue. Uh, the existing side setback is just under two feet of the existing building. Uh, the reconstructed building will be just over two feet. It is substantially the same. Uh, but it's slightly less non-conforming than the proposed building. And then the, the, the bump out, the proposed bump out is fully out of the ten-foot side setback. Um, when it comes to, uh, lot coverage, uh, we are actually reducing the overall lot coverage because we're removing a substantial portion of gravel, uh, parking and gravel coverage here. And, uh, the gravel and paving that's behind the existing building uh, is, some of it is being replaced with lawn and, and, and the proposed, uh, plantings as well as the proposed plantings in front. Um, because the exist, the proposed building is, is, uh, uh, slightly larger than the existing. Our building coverage does increase a bit, uh, but both building coverage and lot coverage are, are well under the, uh, the, the threshold, the maximum requirements by the, the zoning bylaw. The, uh, let's see. Uh, parking open space. Um, I, I, I guess I would say as a, as a, uh, oh, 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 I'm sorry. I did want to say one thing. Uh, so we do have a number of, uh, exterior lighting fixtures that are being proposed, uh, uh, on, on the building. Uh, they are in fact dark, dark sky, uh, uh, and downcast, uh, dark sky compliant. Uh, here is a, a, a representative image of the wooden stockade fence that will be, uh, provided. And then just wanted to quickly go through the architectural drawings. Uh, this is a three-dimensional view showing that the new front door. And, uh, the, the typical downcast and dark sky compliant, uh, uh, lights which, uh, will be on three sides of the building. There will be a full, a full basement, uh, with a bulkhead, uh, and an interior stairway. Uh, living space and a bathroom on the first floor. Uh, on the second floor, there will be four bedrooms and a bathroom and a cent- center hall. There is a small, uh, deck on the back of the building uh, with some stairs that go down to grade, uh, that will, um, uh, uh, conform, conformed, uh, uh, to the, to the edge of the proposed building here in the side setback. And, um, uh, it will be a, a, a clavert building, uh, painted a, a, uh, an off-white yellow color. Um, uh, double-hung windows. Uh, it is, as I said, substantially similar to the building that is there, which is just a rectangle with a gable roof. Um, the gable roof proposed here goes in the same direction the ridge does as the, as the existing building. Uh, this is the small bump out and back and the small, uh, porch, uh, deck in back, uh, go, go with, with um, steps going down to grade. Um, and I think that's a pretty good overview. I, I would be happy to take any, any questions that, uh, people might have.
Thank you. Um, I had one question. Could we return to, um, first sheet you had, which was the, um, the proper site plan, sheet two of three?
Oh, sheet two, okay, yep.
Yep, I'm, yeah, there you go. And help me out with what the dark line structure is to the west of the new house. I noticed that it looks like, is that, uh, that, that's something, yeah, between the garage and the, the new structure. Is there a fence up? Is there a stock, stockard fence up there behind the proposed plantings or what is that?
Oh, I see. Yes, this is an existing, uh, stone retaining wall. Uh, which is, which is, uh, is not going to be modified or removed, and that's what this is as well. Uh, those are two retaining walls that will remain in place. Um, and we are, we're just adding the fence here and the plantings here.
Are there other, other questions from members of the board? Mr. Green?
Um, so I did um, bring up the issue of the driveway. Um, I guess I would like to know since I'm somewhat new. What is the width of the driveway when it goes by the building? And what kind of maybe Mr. Moore or someone or Maureen, what does this meet normal guidelines for how wide a safe driveway is? And I remember I asked, um, Mr. Greenbaum why the building wasn't rotated the other way, but as I see the drawings now, I can see that if you did that, you would have lost that bump out in the back. Um, so let my question be, what's the width of the driveway and is that by normal standards considered adequate and safe?
Well, m- m- maybe just as a, uh, to, to answer the question, uh, from my point of view, uh, the, the width of the driveway, uh, in the front is just over thirteen feet and just under, uh, thirteen feet in the back. So it averages about thirteen feet. Um, I will say that we, uh, uh, we are intending to have the, the reconstructed building, uh, this southern, uh, face of the reconstructed building be more or less where the existing is. We are putting in two, uh, bollards, one at, at the front corner, one at the back corner uh, to help protect, uh, that face of the building from any potential damage from, uh, vehicles going by. I, I, in my experience, uh, of a, a, a private driveway, uh, on a lot like this, um, I don't believe there are any hard and fast requirements, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave that to, to Rob. I, I think of twelve feet as being a pretty typical, uh, the typical width for, uh, for a driveway.
Mr. Green, did that answer your question?
Before Rob answers, I, I would just like to add, um, the observation that, you know, that there are eight parking spaces there and so it's a, a little bit different from like a private home that might have one or two cars is, there could be as many as eight cars and and so it seems like cars might need to pass each other. I guess they wouldn't pass each other in that little, I guess the car would wait and then the other car would go by. Anyway, I'm just wondering, I'm not trying to raise any that, any red flags. I'm just curious.
I, 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 I think you're absolutely right. If, if someone was coming in this driveway and someone was trying to, to go the other way, uh, there's, there's plenty of space to pull off here, uh, for the car coming in to go by or for the car that going in to pull off here and for the car that's leaving to go by, but there clearly is not adequate space for, uh, the passage of two vehicles, uh, in this narrow part of the driveway.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so we would, uh, consider that portion of the driveway as one-way traffic. I agree with Mr. Farley that a typical driveway width that we commonly see now is usually twelve feet uh, minimum. Our bylaw actually allows down to ten feet, but we, uh, w- we encourage a little bit more than ten feet uh, only because we know the, the size of our emergency vehicles, uh, particularly the ambulance. We know ha- as a width of ten and a half feet, you know, tire width to tire outside a tire, outside a tire. So, you know, anything over ten and a half feet, uh, we find to be acceptable for one-way traffic.
Mr. Farley, are you gonna add any, are you changing the lights on the existing building at all? The lighting is acting to remain the same?
That will remain the same. No, no change, uh, whatsoever to any, any features of the existing building.
Existing building, okay. Are there other questions from board members? Mr. Moore, did you want, did you hand up to, or do you just leave it up there? Okay, got it. I have no further questions, um, although Tammy, did, Ms. Parks, did you want to talk about the, the drainage?
No, but I, I am wondering about the Conservation Commission.
So what I can tell you about that is that they, um, they, they're going to, to discuss this. And we are gonna propose a, a condition that requires that anything that they come up with be included in the, um, be complied with in the, in the construction. So if they come up with something, they seek a change and it will come back to us before we, for the issue of building permit. So that we were, um, and they're fine with that. The, the concom is fine with that. So that we were, um, and they're fine with that. The, the COMCOM is fine with that.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? I guess, um, if not, we'll open it to public comment. Anybody, Maureen, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak to this matter?
I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
You do mine. All right. Last call for, for comments from either the applicant or the board member or board members on this matter. If there are no further questions, I, and I expect that we're ready to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open in case we need additional information. Um, I'd entertain a motion to open a, open a public meeting on this matter while keeping the public hearing open. Is there some, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote occurs on a motion to open a public meeting on this matter while keeping the public hearing open. If there's no discussion, this is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Walt, Ms. Waltman?
I am.
Mr. Meadows? Mr. Meadows? Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
Ms. Waldman, I talked over you there. I'm sorry, but I heard your aye.
I did say aye. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Vote is five, nothing. The public meeting is the time for the board to discuss the conditions, the findings and approval or rejection of the special permit application. Regarding the conditions provided in the, um, project application report, there are several conditions, uh, for our consideration. The first is the standard that the project shall be constructed according to the plans submitted and maintained as needed. And those are enumerated in the conditions. It also includes lease agreement, um, submitted June 4th, but I think, is that also include the, um, modification that was submitted subsequent to the project application report? I think we need a, a note here, Maureen, that the lease agreement as modified by the, um, additional um, communication from the, the owner from Mr. Greenbaum.
Sure.
Um, yep. Call rooms to be used and labels in the following approved floor plans, A11 and A12. The approved management plan and complaint response form followed by the property owner. Any changes come back to the, um, to the zoning board of appeals at a public meeting. Uh, this, all exterior lighting shall be designed and installed so as to be shielded or downcast and to avoid light trespass onto adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures shall be selected according to the dark sky compliant recommendations. Any dwelling unit on the property shall be rented, shall be rented, to be rented, shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the residential rental property by law. Street numbers show for both dwellings shall be clearly marked with reflective signage and visible from the public right away from both directions. Parking shall occur on improved services only. The parking area shall be maintained as needed. Parking and drive shall be constructed in accordance with the requirements of Article 7.1. This is the, the condition on overnight visitors, which will be part of the lease. Two people a maximum, two consecutive nights stay. The maximum number of people on the premises at any time is eight. On change of ownership, the new property owner shall be required to return to the ZBA at a public meeting for review and approval of the management plan and the complaint response plan. And the property shall remain free of litter and debris. Are there any additional conditions that board members wish to propose or to discuss? If not, I'd like to move to our findings that we have to make. First finding is under section 9.22. What we have to find is that the, um, special permit granting authority may authorize under a special permit, a non-conforming use of a building structure or land to be extended or a non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged or reconstituted, reconstructed, substituted, that'd be hard, reconstructed, provided that the authority finds that such alteration, enlargement or reconstruction shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming building. The subject property is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with a pre-existing non-conforming structures as it relates to side yard setback, lot frontage and building area as required under section 6.40 ta- and table three dimensional, uh, requirements and zoning bylaws. So we were, we find that the extent, the, um, side setback is, um, no, not any more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing. Indeed, the side setback is almost identical. In fact, just a little bit less. Lot frontage really can't be changed. Uh, it's not really being changed. Um, it's already, um, non-conforming. And the building area is impossible to meet with the lot, uh, the frontage being only 48 feet. So, the existing building is almost exactly the same. Uh, the, the proposed building is almost exactly the same as the existing building. That's going to be demolished. And so the board, I feel the board can make a finding under section 9.22 that the proposed reconstruction into the required side yard setback uh, by 28 feet for 1,096 square foot structure and enlarging the proposed principal structure in an area of the lot that does not contain the required minimum area. The board finds that the proposal is not more substantially different in character or in its effect on its neighborhood or on the property in the vicinity and is not substantially more, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming building. Those are section 9.22 findings. Uh, section 3.0. Um, this involves the relationship between the two structures, the one existing and the proposed structures on the lot itself. The development, section 3.01, the development or operation on a single lot of more than one dwelling or more than one of the principal uses described in section 3.3 is expressly prohibited except where the principal uses are clearly complementary to each other or where otherwise provided by this by law. I think we can find that, um, building an additional house, uh, structure, a dwelling unit is, um, clearly complementary to the existing dwelling unit on the property. Article seven findings. The two sparkings, two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. The applicant has, um, nine parking spaces on the property, uh, eight of which, um, he represented to us would be available for tenants in the parking uh, in the building. Um, the dimensional regulations and dimension, dimensional, uh, article, table three are set here, are set up. We have set, have to make section 10.38 specific findings. 10.380 and 10.381. The proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and or the town as deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority. The proposal is compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right on the site. The applicants proposing two principal uses of two family, two, one family dwellings on the subject property. There is already a mix of housing density in the surrounding neighborhoods with single-family homes, duplexes, three-unit buildings and other density sizes. This is, uh, suitably, no, we find that the prop, the proposal is suitably located. 10.382, 383, 385, 387. These all deal essentially with nuisance to, uh, the, to a butter's neighbors and the neighborhood. Staff, we, we find that the proposal provides planting of a six-foot-high fence to visibly seal the proposed parking to be abutting properly north. Proposal provides planting to visually shield the rear parking areas to be abutting properly to the south. The applicant provides a stock photo of the proposed light fixtures for the dwelling, which are, um, dark sky compliant mount and the proposed sconces located are shown in the building's plans. Um, and we've already sub, um, certified that the proposed, uh, that the existing building, it will have no change in lighting. 10.384, adequate and appropriate facilities provided for the preparation, proper operation. Utility services are found to be adequate for the operation of this, of the existing and the proposed use. 10.386, uh, proposal ensures that if conformance of parking sign, the proposal meets a parking requirement and signage is not required. 10.387, proposal provides convenient and safe for vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. Safe, we find that the, there are safe vehicular pedestrian movement is found on the site. 10.388 requires off-street loading. This is, this section is not applicable to the project. 10.389 provides, the proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and/or a storage of sewage, refuge, recyclables, et cetera, and for, um, drainage of surface water. All plumbing and waste lines will tie into the sanitary, the town sanitary lines as shown on proposed site plans. Trash and recycling builds will be located on the northeast side of the proposed dwelling in it between the two buildings and will be screened by fencing. Refugees and recyclables removed on a regular basis. And in addition, uh, the COMCOM will take a look at, uh, will be providing, uh, input to us on any drainage issues should they occur. Uh, 10.390, the proposed, proposal ensures protection from flood hazards as stated in section 3.228, containing such fact, considering such factors as elevations of buildings, drainage, adequacy of sewage disposal, erosions and sediment, equipment location, et cetera. The submitted plan provides for existing proposed site grading, which shows the drainage being directed away from and around the buildings, similar to drainage pat, pattern of the existing building to be demolished. All exterior equipment will be located on slightly elevated concrete pads, elevated to permit drainage around the pads and trash and recycling will be placed on concrete pads and screened from the adjacent property. Vehicular paving will be graded for minimum, um, drainage to, to maintain existing drainage patterns. No hazardous materials are stored on site. And the proposal will be reviewed by the conservation commission. Um, 10.391 is not applicable. It deals with unique or important natural, historic or scenic features. 10.392 provides adequate landscaping, essentially this deals with landscaping and bufferage. Uh, the proposed reconstituted structure will be located behind the existing structure. So no changes to the front portion of the, of the property will be made. Parking will not include islands and will be located to the rear of the two buildings and will be in substantially the same location as the existing parking. 10.393 provides for protection of adjacent properties by minimizing intrusion of light, including parking lights and exterior lights. The applicant provides a stock photo. We've seen the existing light in the, um, in the parking area. And they're also going to have stock lighting, uh, we're going to have dark star compliant lighting on the new building. The, um, existing light for the parking area will remain. 10.394, proposal avoids to extend feasible impact on slopes. Again, this is, will be dealt with by conservation commission if they have any concerns. 10.395, proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain, use, scale and struck architectural structure of the existing buildings in the vicinity, which have functional or visual relationships there too. Uh, we find the proposals is located in the RG zoning district and is not within the boundaries of the national historic district. The board, uh, will find that the proposal is in harmony with respect to the terrain and to the use, scale and architectural, architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity, which have a functional or visual relationship there too. 10.396, proposal provides screening for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, rooftops, um, et cetera. The built, the proposed location for trash and recycling will be screened. 10.397, proposal provides adequate recreational facilities. Uh, we find there's sufficient open space located on the site. 10.398, proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. We find the proposal is in harmony with an Amish master plan, section four, objective H3, which encourages opportunities for proper infill development. The board needs to determine whether the board has determined that the proposal meets the applicable zoning bylaw sections, including section 3.01, which we made our findings on, 9.22, which we made our findings on, and 10.38, which is, this is the final finding for that section. Are there any questions, comments on findings? If not, um, we can proceed to a mo- I would accept the motion that we approved. I would entertain a motion that we approve the, um, app, the special permit application. And we can just have a discussion on that motion, uh, once it's before us. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, the motion before us is to approve the, um, special permit. I get the number here, special permit, um, FY 2021-19 with conditions. If there's no discussion, uh, the vote occurs. It's a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Waldman?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
We have unanimous vote. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Greenbaum. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have one more. Next order of business is FY 2021-20. John Kuhn requests a special permit in order to allow the construction of a 36 by 64 foot maintenance garage and the installation of two signs under section 3.337, 8.5, 10.38 of the zoning bylaw. Located at Wildwood Cemetery, 70 Strong Street, MAP 11B, partial 70. Neighborhood residents are in zoning district. Members sitting on this panel of myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Mr. Meadows and Ms. Wallman. Are there any disclosures from members? We conducted a site visit on Monday, June 7th. We entered this through the main, to the entrance closest to the existing, um, administrative building. We met with Mr. Roberts and this, and, um, the two staff people for the, the cemetery, uh, including the director and the, um, I think the, uh, person in charge of, of the, um, physical plant. We, um, walked, observed the state area of the new, the new pla- of the new building. Uh, we talked to him about, we talked to Mr. Roberts about their goal of trying to level off some areas close to that so they could hold outdoor services. Um, we observed the placement of the proposed building, uh, how it was low to the ground and there was, they were going to, uh, enter from a, a lower level than currently, lower grade than currently exists. Um, talked about some of the, that the fill would be used for grading. And we talked about the need for, that, that, they expressed a need for having signs that the public could see, uh, when they came into the, one of the, both of the two, um, entrances to the park or to the cemetery. I think that was, uh, most of what we dealt with on, in terms of the site visit. Is there anything anybody wants to add to the discussion of the site visit? Ms. Parks?
Um, that the existing structure will stay and I think will be maintained.
Yeah, that, that's right. That existing garage that's there. Exactly. Thank you. All right. The following information has been received by the staff. ZBA application plan, a management plan, uh, project narrative. Sheet L1, which is the maintenance garage site plan prepared by the Berkshire Design Group dated April 28th, 2021. Maintenance garage and sign locus plan prepared by the applicant dated March 19th, 2021. Building plans for the Wildwood Cemetery Maintenance Garage prepared by John. Building plans for the Wildwood Cemetery Maintenance Garage prepared by John Kuhn. Kuhn dated April twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Those includes floor plan, south elevation, east elevation, north elevation. Another south elevation and west elevation. Designs for plans, the locusts map prepared by the applicant and elevation plan, the main sign prepared by Agnoli. Agnoli Sign Company dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Direction address sign, locus map prepared by the applicant dated March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one and the elevation plan. Directed addressed sign prepared by the Agnoli Sign Company. Also light fixtures, like fixture specifications sheets. Planning staff has submitted a zoning map, a property map, an aerial map, topographical map and a project application report. Dated June fourth, twenty twenty one. And the applicant requests waiver from the management plan requirement. Mister Kuhn and Mister Roberts. Would you like to describe your project and what you're looking to accomplish?
Sure, thank you, I'm John Kuhn of Kuhn Little Architects and also resident of town and I've also been on the board of directors. At Wildwood Cemetery for ten years or more, I'm currently clerk of the corporation. And if Maureen would be so kind as to share the plans, I'll
Bear with me for a moment.
Walk through them quickly. The cemetery was founded in eighteen eighty seven. So it's been around a while, probably they didn't give out special permits at that time or even have zoning districts. But now that it's in the neighborhood residence zone. Any project of this sort requires a special permit. And since we were looking to do two projects. Both construct a building and do the signs and both required special permits, we put them together in one special permit. You can see it's a very large piece of land and as was mentioned, the brick house that you see, it's in the upper square. I think it was a farm originally. And it's been the office for the cemetery for a very long time and upstairs is an apartment. The cemetery has two entrances, the main entrance is the one on the right. Near Hills Road and the the secondary entrance is down across the street from the entrance to Wildwood Elementary School. There's always been some confusion about that and that's why we're talking about signs. The location for the building was chosen because the the site is 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 a combination of rolling pastoral land and heavily wooded areas. And this was one of the few open areas that we felt we could build. It's also close to the the management office and is where many of the vehicles are stored now. Currently, there are a number of vehicles and they all sit outside. Maureen, maybe you can go on to the closer plan or the site plan. The existing brick building is just off this drawing to to the bottom. There's an existing garage that you see that will stay and our our location for the new building is as as shown here. There's an existing dirt road that goes along to the west side of it. And this provides easy access for tractors and excavators. We we built it into the hillside since while it's one of the clear areas to build on this on on the cemetery. It is a sloped area, so we have to accommodate that slope in the building. We're trying to use that to our advantage in hiding the building a little bit, so it's not, it's built into the hillside. And so that the vehicles when they're outside will not be seen for most of the people that come to visit the cemetery is most of the sites are off to the right, to the east. It's a thirty-six by forty-six bill, sixty-four building. Wood frame, concrete foundation walls, there will be a concrete retaining wall. The angle wa- wall you see it kind of at the bottom right there to accommodate for the grades. Maureen, if you'd go to the floor plan, I think that would be helpful. It's three bays where the the truck plow, the tractor and the excavator. Three doors, there will be a workroom for working on smaller equipment. And we we have a building, a building maintenance person or a actually grounds maintenance person who will have an office there as well as a small bathroom. So it's a very simple building, wood frame, it's clambered. It's facing south, we hope to at some point put solar on the roof, you can see the retaining wall there on the right. Lighting will be all on the building itself, I included a light fixture cut in the in the application. It's all downcast lighting basically for fixtures that are over doors. The elevation on the right, the east elevation, you can see that while it's a fourteen foot high wall, it is kind of built into the side of the of the hillside there, so it will be somewhat hidden. It's just a simple wood structure, truss roof, Barry Roberts will be the builder. I guess the next elevation, that's the north side. And you can see the slope coming down that side of the of the building, fourteen foot ceilings inside. I guess the next elevation. We're just putting some small windows in to give, give the building some character and have it be hopefully a handsome structure, not something that detracts. I should mention that we contacted all the butters and had a sort of a meet and greet about a week ago. Two people showed up, both were in favor of the project, so I don't think it's a project that holds a lot of interest or concerns for butters. In fact, the two that came were just both interested in seeing the cemetery and I I understand at the site visit, some of you had probably not seen it as well, so it's a beautiful parcel of land and we've been working very hard in in the recent years to really upgrade the the landscaping and this this maintenance facility will really help toward that end. The signage piece of it, I mentioned that this, this is the main entry and there is an existing sign that you may have seen, but it's set back from the road and it's hard to see. So we are putting a two-sided sign there. It's a carved wood sign, but only the Wildwood Cemetery piece is carved, the other letters are too small to be be carved, they'll be applied letters. It's it's green with gold lettering. The the report, the project report from town staff pointed out that the total sign size is a little larger than is allowed and the height is a little larger. We were concerned about seeing traffic, so we set it up a little higher as you can see in this in this diagram. We're willing to talk about it if if you feel that's an important issue, I suppose we could lower the sign a little bit, but that's that's as it is shown. Six inch steel columns and it'll be landscaped around it and I think be a very handsome addition and will clearly point out where the main entrance to the cemetery is, as there is still confusion to this day. The cemetery is doing very well. I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing, but there's been a lot of interest in it and a lot of parties coming. And as was this suggested, there have been a lot of people wanting to have services there and I didn't mention it when we were looking at the 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 plans, but we are planning to 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 grade this, so there's a flat area to the east of the the maintenance garage so that we can yeah, off to the to the right there, you can see the the dash lines. We can put up a tent there when when that's needed and we've been putting tents up there, but it's on a slope ground, so we'll be able to, in doing the grading here, we'll be able to flatten that out. There are plans for additional plantings and and eventually doing a garden up there, so I think while it's a maintenance facility, it's going to be a a nice aesthetic addition to the property. There's what was one more sign to show you. Because there are two entrances in off Strong Street. This one, which is right across from Wildwood School. That is the business office, but it is also the address for an apartment there. And there's a lot of confusion with deliveries as to where those go, so by putting the address here and calling out it that it, this is the office entrance, we hope to alleviate that confusion. Again, that sign is two by two, so it's four square feet, I think the other sign is around ten. So we're over the twelve square feet that's allowed. But we feel like since these signs are fairly far apart and serve very distinct purposes, we we hope that we can maintain the size and height that that's shown. I think that's pretty much it unless there are questions.
Guess the only thing I would add is one question we did ask, I failed to report on, we asked about trees that would be removed. On the site for the construction and I think there's three or four trees listed that will be removed. Just want to make sure to bring that up because I know we asked that question.
Yes, that one is, I think it shows the three trees that are going to be removed, we're trying to maintain as many trees as possible, one of them is not in good shape anyway. So those those three will be removed, the rest will be maintained.
And the 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 size of the signs, I certainly understand the on the main entrance, which is close to the school and not really observable by anybody in the neighborhood, it seems to me that it's it's entirely appropriate. The second sign. Which is for the, which is a little bit smaller, is that observable by neighbors, is that by by residents, by residential houses? Or is it, I don't remember what across the street from the sec- from the second sign. I don't think it's I
Wildwood Schools are directly across the street and the next house down is Amherst Ballet. Which is on the south side of the street, yeah, you might be able to see this sign from from that, from that spot.
But it's, this is not lit, it's not intrusive, it doesn't appear to me to be intrusive. And the size, well, I think that those, it makes a lot of sense for other areas in town. I'm not so sure that it's needed, that it's essential to maintain the size limitations in this particular application. But I believe I have no further questions, Mister Meadows.
I I'm wondering about the others, the larger sign, John. It's that's up on a slope. Yes. It, I I, given the height of it, might it, if it were a little lower down, might it be easier to see it from the road? Yes, and I I don't think there's any objection to to making this lower. I don't know that going down to four feet is is right, but we'd be certainly willing to lower it to a height that is as low as we can go without blocking sightlines for traffic.
Yeah. That would be the concern.
I don't know how you could build the flexibility into an approval, but we're certainly willing to to look at that.
Well, I think we could have the a revised height. Revised plan for a shorter sign submitted to the building department. And if they determine that it could not impose limits on sightlines for traffic, that it could be approved. I mean, that's one way we could condition the application on that, would that satisfy your concerns?
Absolutely, I think what we'll do is probably mock up a two by four board and hold it up out there. And see what seems like the appropriate size and we can have Agnoli revise these drawings and and submit them to the building department.
Mister Meadows, does that solve your problem?
Yes.
Does that work?
Does, you know, I'd be happy to walk over and take a look when a mockup is put up. Okay.
Great. Are there other questions or comments from board members? I have one other, just this is more curious than it's than essential, Mister Kuhn. There were stairs on the the floor layout, is there a a third, a second floor or is there an attic, what's the the stairs for and
Um, there's
Or is there a basement?
Yeah, it's actually just for storage, I should have pointed that out, so the the main ceiling area there is fourteen feet. And a workroom and office and bathroom do not need fourteen foot high ceilings, so they probably have eight foot ceilings. So there might be a floor area up there at nine feet, it would just be used for 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 storage.
Got it, okay. Alright. Any further questions, comments from board members? If not, we can move to public comment. And I see no hands raised. Public comment. Alright, last chance for applicant or for the board members to raise an issue in the public hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to move to the public meeting on this matter while keeping the public hearing open in case we have any further questions or need to seek public input. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion, I vote aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mister Maxfield.
Aye.
Mister Meadows.
Aye.
Ms. Waldman.
Aye.
Motion carries, the public meeting is a time for the board to discuss and to vote on conditions, findings and make approvals and make our approval decision to approve or reject the application. I've got to find the project application report here. Under section three point three seven. Cemetery. This is a cemetery is allowed by special permit. It's located within neighborhood residents and therefore the proposed maintenance garage is appropriate use for a cemetery in a in a neighborhood residential zoning district. Article eight deals with sign regulations. Eight point one is not applicable, eight point one zero one. In the case of a permitted or authorized use other than a dwelling or use accessory there to or in the case of sale or lease of the premises. Two signs pertaining to such use, sale at least of times clearly within any that the combined total area of such signs clearly visible from any point off the premises shall exceed twelve square feet only under a special permit issued by the special permit granting authority. The combined, we find that the combined total area of the proposed signs is thirteen point eight nine square feet. Which exceeds the allowed area by one point eight nine square feet. We may grant a special permit for this under our authority and we may grant a waiver, a waiver from that 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 restriction. And in our case, we're going to have the lower sign looked at by this by the building department and brought to us if there is a substantial change more than just the reduction in height. Eight point one three one zero three, no sign shall be allowed to exceed four feet high in the height above the grade except that projecting signs with total area of three square feet or less, maybe up to six feet high. The proposed maintenance sign is height of sixty-eight inches or five point six feet above the ground. This was the subject of our discussion regarding the height and the consideration, the submission to the building department. Eight point one zero four, there shall be no front setback requirements for signs allowed on private property under this section except that no sign shall be set closer to any public sidewalk than thirty inches. This is not applicable, there's no public sidewalk. Section eight point five, any section or subsection of article eight sign may be waived or modified by the permit granting authority. Or special permit granting authority authorized to act under the applicable section of the bylaw for compelling reasons of public convenience, safety, aesthetics or site design. We find that the requested waiver modifications of eight point zero one zero and eight point zero one three. Are for compelling reasons of public convenience, public safety, aesthetics and or site design and are further conditioned by the subsequent review of a revised site plan for the mains, the the main site, main signage. Section ten point three eight specified findings that Section 10.38 specified findings that were required to make, 10.380 and 10.381. The proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and of the total towns deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority. The proposal, we find the proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood and it's compatible with the existing cemetery located on that subject property and the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant is proposing 2,003, 2,2,304 square foot detached maintenance garage and two signs with combined total area of 13.89 square feet. 10.382, 383, 385, and 387, all deal with nuisance. We find that the various types flood noise, order, dust, vibration, lights, or offensive structures. We find that the applicant has provided dark sky compliance, lighting for the maintenance, the garage and other nuisances will not occur. 10.384, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided at the proper orient, up for, provide for proper operation of the proposed use. We find that the utility services are found to be adequate for the operation in the existing proposed use. 10.386, the proposal ensures that it's in accordance with parking and signage regulations. That is not applicable. So there's a parking sign regulations, not parking and sign regulations. 10.387, proposal provides convenient safety to a traffic and pedestrian movement within the site. We find that safe vehicular and pedestrian movement is found on the site. 10.388, the proposal ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and loading of vehicles. We find that proposal provides adequate space for off-street loading, unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to normal operation of the establishment or the use. 10.389, proposal provides adequate methods of disposal or storage for waste sewage refuge. According to town records, the subject property is connected to the town water and sewer. 10.390, the proposal ensures protection from flood hazards as stated in 3.228. Considering such factors as elevation of buildings, et cetera, the property is not within a designated flood zone. 10.391, the proposal protects to the extent feasible, unique, or important natural or historic features. The cemetery is open pastoral land with grave sites or heavily wooded, rolling, or heavily wooded and rolling. So there is little open level land on which to build. The site chosen for the proposed maintenance shed is in an area north of the existing two-story brick building and is sloping to the west and has few trees, but it is the best and possibly only site for the new structure. It is also well-located in relation to the existing gravel roadway system. The proposals, the proposed structure will be built into the hillside to minimize the view of the structure from the cemetery while also shielding vehicles that may sometimes be parked outside from view. 10.392, the pole maintains adequate landscaping, et cetera. The grounds of the property are found to be well-maintained. 10.393 provides protection by minimizing intrusion of light, including parking in exterior areas. The proposed applicant proposed dark scar compliant on both the south building facade and the building maintenance facades, both proposed signs would not be eliminated. There is no change in, in light splash across into neighbors from this proposal. 10.394, proposal avoids the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, floodplains, and scenic views. Siding of the maintenance garage works with the sloping topography located on the subject property. 10.395, proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain and to the use scale or architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have functioned for our visual relationship thereto. Staff reviews finds and we find that submitted building plans show that the proposed 2,304 square feet maintenance garage to be harmonious with the terrain, terrain and to the use scale and architecture of the existing building in the vicinity, which have functional or visual relationships thereto. 10.396, proposal provides screening for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, et cetera. We find the cemetery has one 60 gallon recycling barrel and one 60 gallon garage barrel. U.S. Waste and Recycling provides bi-monthly pickup. The barrels are stored near the existing two-story brick structure. 10.397, the proposal provides adequate recreational facilities. We find that there is sufficient open space on the site. 10.398, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. The proposal, we find this proposal is located on the subject property is in harmony with the master plan. The board has determined that it meets section, we've made findings regarding section 3.337, 8.5, and 10.38 under the zoning bylaw. Possible conditions that we would impose are listed on this, on the staff project application report. They deal with the standard, the project to be built according to the approved plans, which include a management plan, a narrative, maintenance garage site, maintenance garage plans, building plans for Wildwood Cemetery dated April 29th, which include five sets of, six sets of plans. The main sign, which is going to come back to the, will need a condition that the mains, the main sign will come back and altered design to the building department and will be reviewed there. And if there is substantial change or in their judgment, we need to look at it at a public meeting. It will come back to us. So you can create that kind of a condition, Maureen. And the lights fixtures will be, are as specified. All exterior lighting shall be designed and installed so as to be shielded or downcast and to avoid light trespass onto adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures shall be selected according to dark sky compliant recommendations for ZVA rules and regulations. Are there any other conditions that people wish to consider or think are necessary for us to make our findings and approve the application? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the special permit application with conditions. So do I have? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Waldman?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. It carries. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. The next order of business is a public comment on any matter that is not before the board tonight. Are there any public comments? I think it's such a beautiful night that nobody that doesn't have to be here is outside enjoying it. So we, the good news is we still have a few, a little bit of light left, so we can still enjoy the evening. If there are no public comments, Maureen, when is our next meeting? I know we can't meet in two weeks. It's, is it not July?
So we're, we are not meeting on June 24th.
24th.
We're not meeting.
Not, we are not meeting on the 24th. Yeah.
No. So the next meeting will be on Thursday, July 8th.
Great. And to the extent that people haven't filled out the doodle poll on their availability for the summer, please do that. It'll help us plan for the rest of the, of our meetings. And to, I think Sharon, this may be your last meeting with us. Is that right?
Not sure. I, I come in, I'm kind of like the pin chitter, you know, I come in when I, when I'm needed.
Well, we, you're, you are needed. And if it's not your last meeting, then I don't want to make you feel that it should be. So I'd encourage you to stay, I'd encourage you to stay with us as long as you possibly can. I hope you will, but thank you. And I hope it continues. And Mr. Greedy, you too. I understand that this, you're extending your time with us to help fill in some gaps we have in coverage and we really appreciate it. And thank you for your service for as long as you have been and, and for the next couple of meetings as well. So it's good to have you both on, on board.
I have a question for Maureen.
Yes, Mr. Meadows, go ahead.
I filled out the doodle poll. Can that be revised now that we're doing? Okay, so I can go back to the doodle poll.
You can. So I, I think at the site visit, I might have misspoke about meetings after the state of emergency. So the, I believe the, the State House is trying to draft legislation that will allow, allow virtual meetings either for this, the remainder of the summer or perhaps indefinitely. But until that is approved, if and when it's approved, starting on June 15th, all town boards and committees will need to meet in person. I've, I've been told that rumor has it that the State House may approve this bill on Monday, June 14th. So I guess it's, stay tuned. So I, yeah, so, but yes, but the doodle poll may be advised. So at any
I'll wait until after you let us know whether they approve that or not.
Okay, yep.
And, and Maureen and Rob, is the town still considering, trying to figure out how they're going to provide public access via Zoom for our in-person meetings? Or is there still thought about that once we do actually meet in person again?
Yeah, we've talked about that. It turns out to be fairly complicated and requires a lot of coverage and staffing to, to accomplish it. So what I understand is that, you know, the, the first effort will be made to have that happen for the council meetings, but not necessarily any other border committee meetings initially. But hoping that in the future, there'll be either a hybrid or some other type of allowance for virtual meetings to continue.
So we'll have, we'll start out with just regular public meetings as we had in the past.
I, I would expect that this would be back to regular public meetings whenever that occurs. I mean, we're hoping, you know, as Maureen said, you know, there, there'll be at least an extension until September. Now, we're hoping it will happen so this can continue this way.
Great. Okay. All right, Tammy.
I just have a quick question for Maureen. Do you have decisions, do you have a decision that needs to be signed still?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Check your emails, which references the decisions and where you can find the decisions for signing.
Okay.
What is the process?
So you'll have to physically, so town hall is now open to the general public. And, and so the decisions are allocated on the second floor at the, in the planning department. And so I give you instructions in the email where you can find the decisions. And then about getting into town hall, the door at the main street door entrance to town hall is, is, is the door to enter. And then you can take the stairs or the elevator up. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a, shoot me an email.
All right. Well, everybody go out and enjoy this cooler weather for as long as it lasts. And, oh, yes, Dylan.
I, I will make the motion, but I will say, yeah, so this Saturday, anytime, one o'clock to three o'clock, four o'clock, we'll be going. Come on by, celebrating graduation, pulled pork ribs. You're all invited. I think, I think we got what? Hilda, if you're in the audience, you want to come, you're invited as well. It'll be at 290 North Pleasant Street. Come on by. Maureen, I'll send you an email again. You can, you can pour that out to everybody. I know Dave's not here tonight, but yeah, he's invited as well. So guys can come on out, come say hello, get some barbecue and yeah, I hope to see you.
And celebrate your graduation.
Celebrate the graduation. Finally done.
Congratulations.
All right.
Absolutely.
And on that, I will move to adjourn.
Is there a second? That motion is not debatable. All in favor, it's a, it's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Ms. Waldman?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And just for good luck, Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We'll see you all soon.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.